Cindy is she's not going to join us this evening. Well, it is a little bit after six, so let's go ahead and get started. It's called the Johnson City Council Work Session Number 23-01 to Order. Cindy Rowcall, please.
Councilmember Cope.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burger?
Here.
Martin.
We have several discussion items this evening. It appears all are related to the FY 24 budget. So we'll begin with the first one, the Johnson Economic Development Corporation request.
Thanks for having us. On behalf of the JEDCO Board of Directors, thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working together with the City of Johnston in the coming year. With a grant of $30,000, we believe we can leverage the benefits of the public-private partnership with the City of Johnston and work together to grow JEDCO and build the capacity for a stronger economic development partnership.
Hi, I'm Grant. Know most of you, I'm the Vice President of JEDCO currently and will be the incoming President if so elected here in our upcoming annual meeting. As Jennifer stated, as many of you participated know, we went through a strategic planning exercise where we hired Joe Benish and his company as the leader facilitator of that. And together, we had multiple meetings and went through a series of discussions to try to determine the direction of JEDCO. And through that strategic planning exercise, we came up with about 12 different objectives that we wanted to try to accomplish and thought that it would be the best thing for the community and for the economic development of Johnston. And then we pared that down to really three of those objectives that we're going to try to focus on in the 2023 or excuse me, 2324 time period. And we wanted to just very briefly discuss those as we ask for your support financially to make this organization successful. Those three objectives, we're going to just go into a little bit of detail on each one of those. First one is creating financial stability. The second one is expanding our role within the city and connection with the Chamber. And then the third one is coordinating and holding events. And I'll let Jennifer talk about our first objective, creating financial sustainability.
In order to do this, we'd like to increase membership through committee work, events, and educational development programming. We'd also like to provide economic development assistance to both developers and to the City of Johnston. And we hope to bring private sector dollars to the table to help support community services.
The second objective, expanding our role with the city and the Chamber. Primarily, we want more connectivity with you and with the city. And we felt like maybe that was something that we hadn't done a great job of in the past, but we're committed to doing in the future, working with Adam and the entire staff and the City Council and just having really strong relationships and open lines of communication. Together, we hope to hold some joint events where we profile both JEDCO and the city by increasing our visibility through the community. And with city staff and leadership, we'll continue to participate in JEDCO meetings and events and vice versa. So we really hope to increase our awareness of JEDCO across the entire community and also to increase the bond between JEDCO and the Chamber. We felt like historically, those two organizations have worked really well together, and there's no reason why they shouldn't going forward.
Our final and third objective for the year is to coordinate and hold more events. Those might include property tours, our annual meeting, which is Tuesday, January 24th at Hyperion from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you want to get that on your calendar, invitations should be going out tomorrow morning for that. We'd like to hold more monthly program-based membership meetings. So meetings at our members' locations where we can learn more about them, they can learn more about us. It will facilitate some one-on-one networking opportunities for everyone. I know that we have a lot of members who would probably like to get to know city staff and city council a little bit better. So I think that would enhance the relationship there. Networking get-togethers, again, same objective, similar to the event that we just held this past fall over at Back Pocket. And educational development forums. I think that with the new passing agreement with Xenia Water, I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity for things to start happening in the Northwestern section and along the 141 corridor. So it's a really exciting time to be looking at all the opportunities there.
I think I'd just close on, along with our funding request to the city. We've always felt like an economic development organization needs to be balanced and needs to be a strong public-private partnership. And I would say we were pretty quiet for the latter half of 2021 and almost all of 2022 until Jennifer came on board as Executive Director in August. And just in three or four short months that she's been on board, we've already got $25,000 worth of commitment from the private sector. So I want you to know that any money that the city would commit to us is being well-matched. And Jennifer is just doing a great job of raising our profile. And I think people are backing the organization through their checkbooks and through their funding, so.
Do you have any questions for us?
Council, any questions?
So you mentioned the coordinating and holding events. Do you envision a return of the sort of fall bus tour that we had done in previous years? Is that something that's potentially on the agenda or is that words or thoughts on that?
I think so. A lot of people have told me that in the past, it was very well-received. Everybody loved it, so we're definitely going to be looking at doing something just like that or very similar. I think it'd be great to be able to get people together again, and especially with the Northwest Corridor, taking a look at what's available and what might be out there. Revitalization within the city, too, is something that is on a lot of people's minds and how we can get into some of those areas that need some attention fixing up.
Grant or Jennifer, can you just talk to us a little bit about your membership and what your goals are in increasing your membership? What your current membership is and what you hope to be able to attain over the next year?
Yeah, we're just, I've been trying to reach out to all different kinds of people. I will be contacting city council members now to get together to learn more about one another. But I've been meeting with developers, builders. I've been attending a lot of different meetings, just ICRA partnership meetings, trying to just meet as many people as possible. And I feel like my role is to just network, bring those people together to make the projects happen.
And our private sector funding stream is kind of twofold. So there's a base membership level that's determined by your FTEs, your full-time employees in your organization, and then there's sponsorships. So anybody can be a sponsor, of course. So we have various sponsorship levels, and then we have the actual membership, which is again driven by the FTE. So that's kind of how that's structured.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next organization is the Johnson Chamber.
Good evening. Alan Graham, I am the current President for the Johnson Chamber.
I'm Sam Weinberger. I'm the Executive Director of the Johnson Chamber.
So again, thanks for your consideration. We're back here again. And really, our request and focus is to, things you heard from JEDCO. I mean, really, I see our role, even though through the city and through JEDCO and through the Chamber, we have a little different focuses. It's all of us coming together to help build Johnston as a community and as a business focus as well. That is one of our key factors. And actually, I know there's already been discussion between Samantha and Jennifer to kind of rebuild that partnership. And we've always had a good partnership with the city, and we would look to continue to not only continue that, but also grow that. And we've got coffee scheduled to get that started as well. So that's one key area that we have for this coming year. Another one, which is critical to us, is the success of our memberships. You know, that's really kind of what we drive on as we have seen the struggle of our business members. For some of them, we also look to our existing members and new members to continue to grow those and find out ways that we can help and be there to make them successful, which in turn obviously helps all of us, the more successful they are. And some of that is through trying to drive awareness of our new business members to the community. And that's really kind of what we spent some time and resources on this year to put in place a new system that will hopefully relieve some, Sam, of some of the day-to-day administrative duties. And so we have a new system in place, and you'll be hearing more about that as you follow the Chamber. But this will allow Sam to be out there and actually on the ground, meeting with new people and trying to not only get new members for the Chamber, but also actually make that a meaningful relationship so that she knows them and they know us. And that's really what, one of the other factors that we're looking for. The third is really driving off our finding ways to improve our event, especially Green Days being our main one. We know that's a big deal for the city and our community. And while there's a ton of effort that goes into that, we've seen more and more struggle to make that a financial success for us. Costs have gone up, you know that. Sponsorships have gone down. And so it's, we're, I know, we've, we're having some meetings, we're actually doing a review. We've partnered with some Drake students to review that and see if they have ways to help us figure out better ways to increase revenue, lower expenses. And so that's another item we have on the agenda, as well as working with, you know, the different areas of the city to figure out how we can work better together and partner to do that, to make that a more successful event, not just getting people there, but to actually see if we can get a little revenue out of that as well. So that's our main objectives for this year and the reason for our request. Good evening, Dan.
I think you pretty much covered it. I mean, like he talked about and Jennifer talked about, one of my main goals coming on as Executive Director in March has been working with all the organizations within our community, as well as JEDCO, now with Jennifer on board, as well as the city, looking at Rotary and Lions Club. As I learned this, not full year, but this partial first year onboard, you know, there's a lot of different things that different organizations do. And for me, I think it makes sense for us to collaborate a little bit more, making that easier for our members and our city, people of the city, and then different members of the different organizations to be able to take advantage of those opportunities. So that's a really big thing that I'm focusing on this year. And this budget will allow to go into some things to make things a little bit easier on my end, so I can make that a focus.
Question.
Comment on a question. You know, Green Days is, you know, kind of one of our premier events, and it's always very well-done and very well-attended. So, you know, we want to encourage you to continue, obviously, to continue to do that. So it'll be interesting to see what the students come up with, because we, you know, we recognize that it has been a financial challenge. I mean, every year, it just seems to, you know, be more and more of a challenge.
Yes.
So it's, it's going to be interesting to see, and hopefully, they come up with some really great ideas.
I think so. I think it's good, I think it's always good to have an outside perspective on and ask some questions, because a lot of us have been doing this many years. And, you know, it's kind of, if there's some new eyes, maybe there's some different things we should be doing or doing things differently, so, yeah.
So my question is kind of the same as the one that I just posed to JEDCO. It looks like you increased your membership by 32 last year.
We did.
Thirty-two new members. That's incredible. What is your current membership?
So currently, we're at 217.
Wow. That's, that's great, but you're going to continue to try and grow it even more, right?
Well, absolutely. So, I mean, you know, we hope that we, like I said, to me, I see this as kind of full circle for everybody is that we hope there's continued growth from a business perspective. There's buildings sitting around that we need to fill.
There's some opportunities right up the sidewalk.
I know, actually.
I just signed up the cork, he's signing up tonight as we speak.
Yep. So, but I think we need to, to make it a stronger business community in general, the more we can get those connected and then all of our businesses kind of working together and all of our community, us helping drive people to those businesses is, that needs to be our key focus.
Well, thank you for doing that. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
The next organization is the Johnson Community School, Community Education Budget Request.
Mayor and Council, Scott Cruethoff could not be here this evening, so he does send his apologies. Their request, this would be their 32nd year of this partnership with the City of Johnston of doing community, the outreach program that they do, the relationship we have, the 2080 agreement. We do pay one-third of the administrative cost under this agreement. Their request last year was $81,673. This year is $83,318, or a 2% increase over last fiscal year. This is a good partnership, long-running partnership, and I guess I would pause there if the Council has any questions that we could get information and answer your questions.
Their quarterly newsletter just came out, lots of, lots of new, great programming that they're offering this spring, so. You haven't taken advantage of it, do? I have, and I've already signed up for three of the classes, so you do a nice job. Other questions or comments, Council? I see none. We're going to get through this Council meeting very quick tonight. Okay, moving on to the Des Moines Partnership. The Greater Des Moines Partnership.
Yes, Greater. Evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me and Councilmembers. My name is Mike Swayze, and I'm the Executive Vice President with Greater Des Moines Partnership. And just a quick refresher on who we are. Greater Des Moines Partnership is a regional, community, and economic development organization. We started in, we were, actually, we took an old Chamber of Commerce and some other groups and blended them together and really kicked off as the Greater Des Moines Partnership in 1999. And I want to thank the City of Johnston for your continued support since day one, a founding group that was part of our organization. We started out as a three-county region. We have grown to an 11-county region and population, we represent a population of approximately 850,000 people. And we partner with our local economic development groups such as JEDCO and City of Johnston and all of our partners in the region as we market, aggressively market Central Iowa to the country and really around the globe as a place to locate a facility, grow your company, or to grow your career. So over the past few years in your pocket, or the past year, I think in your pocket, you have a lot of information. I'll just highlight a few things that we're pretty proud of is we're kind of the regional, the front door to the region as companies take a look at the region for opportunities to grow their companies. We hosted 33 prospects last year in 12 months. It's a pretty, pretty good run for us. We conduct recruitment trips across the country. We go to major markets and meet with businesses, business executives, site selection consultants, anybody who may have an influence on where companies will grow. And then we also have a monthly email blast that goes out to about 1,000 site selection consultants bragging about what's going on in our region. And then we have a lot of marketing efforts to the national media and around the country. When you see all of the rankings that this region receives, what I like to point out is none of those rankings are paid for. So we tell the story, we get the information out there, and we get the high rankings and the visibility that way. We have been the fastest-growing metro in the Midwest for over 10 years running. And we have fantastic partners and fantastic communities, which is Johnston, to live in and to grow your company or your business. And Mike, we haven't met yet, but welcome to an amazing metro, amazing suburb here. You're going to love it here. We just have great partners, and we all, we all really move forward as one community. And we need to do that, because we don't compete against metros that are our size. We always compete against metros that are larger. And so we have to act bigger, we have to play bigger, and we have to have the amenities of larger communities. So a lot of the big amenities, regional amenities, the Greater Des Moines Partnership is working on, such as getting the airport terminal over the finish line, we're getting close, the Icon Water Trails, a new regional visioning plan, also helping to recruit big events into the region as well, just on and on and on to keep the region as a place that people want to grow, want to grow their family, especially the young workforce, which we are relatively young workforce that people don't realize. We're about 36 age, 36.2, I think, is the number. So that's a relatively young population and growing population. So we're proud of that, and we are going to double down and market heavily to college students and recent college graduates and former Iowans to get them to move to our region. Real quick on the funding, we're requesting $10,000 as an annual commitment. And I like to point out that we try to keep our funding at over 85% private. And so we're very judicious with our funds. We just added 74 new members this year that were all private members. And we did, we did add one new county, Mahaska County, and Oskaloosa decided to join. So we're very cognizant that we need to, you know, really use the public money in a manner that is for public good and benefit. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about what we were doing moving forward or what we've done in the past.
So Council, have any questions?
So Mike, in your, the letter, you reference the 33 prospect visits. Can you talk a little bit about what are some of kind of the fundamental elements that those prospects are typically looking for? Like how large a site, or what are the kind of fundamental elements they're really looking for when they're doing that type of site visit to the metro?
Yeah, I love that question, because I forgot to mention something. We are rolling out this year a site readiness program. And so there's currently a site certification program that you can achieve from the state level. But we are taking that and we're removing a lot of the tough barriers to the sites, the cost, some of the commitments that you need to make in the certification process and things like that. So we're rolling out a new, a program that will, that we will have populated sometime this year. And so when prospects come in, speaking of sites, when they come into the region, they want to know that the site's ready to go. A lot of us can drive by a site and say, that'd be a great spot for X, Y, and Z. Well, maybe, maybe it wouldn't. But, so we're putting a process in place to, I hate to use the word certify, but to put a stamp of approval that site's ready to go. When you ask, what are they looking for, there's, depends on the industry, depends on the company, a whole host of things they're looking for. Workforce, number one, almost always workforce, number one, so population, a growing population, a young workforce population, they're looking for that. The qualification of the workers. We have a very high percentage of four-year degree people in our population. And so that always plays well. Access in and out of the region, so the Interstate 8035 is huge. You've seen the logistics have just blown up in the last five years. And then the airport, we're breaking records at the airport with not only in-plane lanes, but also cargo. And so that's becoming a bigger issue in the region. And then quality of life and affordability. And we still, even though we see our prices going up versus the country, we're still a very affordable place to live, to buy a home and to live. So those are some of the things that factor in. It's usually industry-specific, so some of the other peer companies that might be here, easier to recruit people to the region if they have their options, if it doesn't happen to work out where they're, where they're moving to. And so it, there's no one exact answer, every project's a little bit different, but just a whole host of things that they look for. Business taxes are huge, and obviously, our business taxes in the state are heading in the right direction. Not every state can say that. And, yeah, I could probably go on and on, but mostly, it comes down to workforce, quality of life, quality of living, cost of doing business, and access to the community.
Great question.
Other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate your support and consideration. Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you. The next organization on the list is the Johnson Partnership.
Mayor Paula, good to see you. I feel like we come off of this time of year, not that everybody's like tired of hearing about us, but, you know, Mayor Paula does a great job of promoting us at this time of year and coming off the holidays when everybody kind of remembers we're around.
1,710 miles.
I know, and I, there's a few more that got added today. Sorry about that. It is a good thing, it is, it really is. And how many have you checked off already?
Well, 24.
Very good. That's about 20 more than I've done this year. So yes, Johnson Partnership, Human Services for Johnson. You guys are familiar with who we are, what we do. We are very grateful for the support of the Johnston community. This time of year, I'm always reminded, between Paula and all the people that show up at our door this time of year is just a wonderful reminder of how it takes everybody to get this done. So we are grateful for all of that. And for the City Council's commitment, I know last year, we saw an increase. We're keeping our requests the same this year, just because we have had our first normal year in a long time, I'll just put it that way. We were kind of prepared for whenever SNAP benefits got cut, that we were going to see, unfortunately, that increase, it came back. And it came back with a vengeance. So we had seen some of our busy, we actually set seven new records, monthly records this year for a number of people served in our space coming through the door. And, you know, it's just, it's been that way across the board. We've seen it in our backpack program. We've had about 25 to 30% more kiddos needing those that we provide each week during the school year. We have seen an increase in requests for our benevolence, our financial assistance, which we have not had the funds to keep up with that, but we're doing best we can with what we get, so we're trying to make sure that everybody gets a little something in terms of assistance that way. Yeah, and just the, you know, everybody knows how costs have gone up, so it costs us more to keep the stock in the pantry. And people are coming to us that are needing more and more, and we're seeing more repeat visitors every month as well. People who come only once a month or once every three months are coming every week or sometimes every day. So that's just the unfortunate reality of where we are. And, you know, just touching a little bit on, mentioned in here about the Food Bank and the whole Food Bank D mark. For those who have been paying attention to how that all operates, we were one of the pantries that did not sign the contract extension. It was, there's still, you hear a lot of things in the media. It was, there's still, you hear a lot of things in the media, and even I spend days going, okay, what's happening again? Because I'm having a hard time keeping track. We're still at a place of we have not restored those relationships with Food Bank. We, when you're looking at how we work with DMARC and how we worked previously with Food Bank, DMARC provided, you know, 80% of our food. Food Bank was providing 20% on a, you know, generous scale, usually closer to 10%. So when we had to make a decision as to who we had to go with, DMARC wasn't asking us to make that decision. That was something that Food Bank did unbeknownst to any of us that that was coming. So at the end of the day, I can't make decisions that take down DMARC, I need them to exist.
But you have a board that makes those decisions.
And unfortunately, our board never got to make that decision. Food Bank made the decision for us. There was a deadline assigned that was not communicated. We tried to go as a collective because we did all have, as 15 pantries, the same concerns. So we came at that and it was not taken well that we were coming at them all together. So they decided they wanted to have 15 different conversations and we all had 15 very different conversations. So the line was a little different for all of us, which is also a challenge that, you know, again, that's behind us, we're trying to move forward and figure out where we're going next. I mean, I hear things that give me hope. I believe in the end that it will all be restored. It's just unfortunate that we've had to waste a lot of time in the past few months. I've been at West Moonlight City Council meetings and other organizational meetings just trying to figure out how we're gonna get to the end of whatever this is. So, yeah, so that's still in a, that has definitely impacted, it was unfortunate that it was at the time of year where we're busiest, but it was also at a time of year where we're talking a lot about who we are and what we do. So we got to tell that story to more people and make sure that they understood what was going on and how it's impacting everybody. Again, at the end of the day, it's impacting those that come to our doors every day. So that's the hard part, is that we don't want to see them suffer. So just trying to figure out whatever it takes to get to the solution at the end of the line. So I don't know if anybody had any questions over what's in here.
Council, any questions?
I would like to explore a little bit further on this relationship, just so we all understand. The Food Bank had asked for you to change the amount of food that was delivered to each client who would come before the partnership, isn't that correct?
Yes, they were asking us essentially to double the amount, which, again, if we could have done, we would have been doing that a long time ago. There's people that need it, so we would definitely have held to that. DMARC already has us do that. They were asking for an additional amount and they were not putting the food behind it. They were asking us to do that with the food that DMARC provides to us. So that was kind of the breaking point, that it's like, I'm willing to do it if Food Bank can give us that extra inventory. It was gonna be a strain on our staff and on our space and everything else, but we were, it's like, if you can give us the food, we'll figure it out. There was no extra food from Food Bank for that additional requirement that they were asking. So that's kind of where the hangup was, that I can't sign a contract in good faith that's going to take down another nonprofit, when they're the ones that are doing the most work on that end, so.
So the 20%, if I heard you correctly, the 20% of food that you perhaps, if we generously attribute that to Food Bank, you're making up that difference how?
We are purchasing. So we've worked very closely with the Johnston Fairway, manager Paul there has been phenomenal. Milk and eggs are the big thing. That's a protein source and something that everybody needs. And if anybody knows who's tried to purchase eggs recently, prices haven't been super kind, but we've been, we're committed to at least filling that gap. There's been some other avenues that we've explored with other organizations, trying to figure out how to fill some of those other things at low cost or no cost around food rescue. But again, that system has all been kind of broken by this whole Food Bank contract as well. That was an unexpected consequence to the whole thing. But it's, you know, we're just trying every day to figure out the best, you know, at the end of the day, every, most everybody that shows up at the table is looking to this same solution. So, you know, we just rely on that and make sure that we can, at the end of the day, get the stuff that we need. So we're buying a lot of that, though. So our food expenses have gone up almost 50% since October 1.
Okay.
But it's what you need to do when people are showing up at the door, so.
First of all, I appreciate your description of the whole Food Bank, DMARC thing because...
It's been very confusing. Even those of us who are in it, it's very hard.
I, yeah, I never, I always sort of thought Food Bank supplied DMARC and then DMARC supplied, but that, your description was very helpful, so appreciate that. In your packet, you have a slide that talks about a total revenue of $300,000. So that's income that you raise through donations?
Yes.
Okay.
Majority of our donations are private donors.
Okay, great, great. Well, that's really impressive. I mean, that's a, that's a...
The base that we've built and we have a growing number of sustaining donors who believe in that monthly commitment to us.
Right, right. That's very impressive. And I think it's important, you know, this, we obviously, I think the city, we provided resources and additional resources, but I think it's important
Yes.
that you also have a good balance of outside resources as well. And this is a, I think, a really good demonstration of that, so.
In fact, there was a, again, it's unfortunate, and I'm not trying to, you know, compete, it's a competition for dollars unfortunately, but there are organizations and people out there who have committed to Food Bank or committed to others and in the midst of all this, or, you know, have, have, some people have said it, some people haven't, but we've had a lot new, a lot of new donors and a lot of people saying, this is money I would have given to Food Bank that is going to my local, because like if I'm trying to help Johnston, it makes sense for it to stay in Johnston. So I appreciate that.
And thank you for everything that you guys do, appreciate it. I've been there several times and you do a phenomenal job. Quick question though, so where are you, the people who walk into your organization to get food or whatever needs, how do they actually know to come or where to come? Or do you, do you have some kind of public services for people?
Right.
I'm looking to see if, how do you help with refugees that just came into the country? They don't know how to
For sure.
manage everything else?
Yes.
Don't go in, so.
And that was something that started earlier in the year when we had our Afghan neighbors that now showed, and we were, you know, we work very closely with the school district and other nonprofits to make sure that they know where we are and how to get to us. Catholic Charities, LSI and USCRI are all partner agencies that, you know, be they volunteers for those organizations or staff, you know, if they're, they have people that they know are closer to us, they figure out how to connect us. There's no one way, unfortunately. The best way that I have seen with our clients, for those who don't have the actual dollars in hand, a major source of currency is knowledge and what you know. And so it's word of mouth. So it's a lot of times people telling other people. I had a friend, you know, I get a lot of phone calls from people who are telling me, my neighbor said that she was there last week, can you tell me what your hours are? That sort of thing. So it's a lot of different ways. I mean, we're of course using social media and DMARC, you know, anything that they want to put out, we're putting our name on that. Anybody who's seen our truck driving around now, because we have our dedicated truck drivers, so that's out there, every which way that we can to get the word out. But we work a lot with our community resources and our partner agencies to make sure that they know what our hours are, when to find us. And if nothing else, here's the phone number, give us a call and we'll figure out how to get it done.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I just want to make one more comment. I also echo all of the sentiments and the appreciation that you do within this community. One of the other things I would implore all of our folks to do is, so much of your data for partnership is also available though via the DMARC website now. So I know I bored many of you last year by what I thought was giving the kind of shortened, condensed version of it. You can dig into usage by month and see, as I'm watching it right now, the trend line has drastically increased since those SNAP benefits have decreased.
I know that DMARC has been willing to come out and do those presentations before. It's might, maybe been a while, but if that's something that the council is ever interested in, they're willing to come and do that. And they can overlay every political boundary you can think of, school district boundaries, so you can really see how that operates and how people travel within the network to be able to get what they need, so.
Anything else, council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. You bet. Okay, we have, Cindy, we have Impact Community Action Partnership. Do we have anybody here for that one?
We do not, mayor and council. Impact Community Action Partnership, they've made a financial request to the City of Johnston. And while Impact has previously made financial requests to the city, we have not provided funding to them in the past. We have partnered with them on the Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program in the past, but that, as that agreement states, that's a independent, there's no financial commitment that the city needs to make for that program. So staff is just simply looking for direction on if this is going to be a group the city would like to entertain funding in the upcoming fiscal year.
That depends on how much money we have.
It doesn't look very good.
Well, I think our, you know, our budget is gonna be a challenge this year and it's gonna be difficult to take on any new requests. We did not fund this last year. It's unlikely, I think, it's probably unlikely that we're gonna be able to do that this year, just given the budget challenges that we're facing.
Excuse me, we do, we do still participate, or customers can participate in that program if they still qualify, but it's federal dollars. That's where they get the money, or to help pay for their utility bill. So it isn't the city money. And so when they send the letter that said they appreciated partnering with us before, you know, that's what kind of threw me off again, and I had to reread what we did last year. I did check out, or check with the other metro communities, excuse me, and there are two, excuse me, that Windsor Heights gives them a little bit of money and so does Norwalk. However, then other communities then commented back and said, we're not, because it's federal money and that's what that program was supposed to be about. So when we got the information, I showed it to the city administrator, and then he asked if they'd ever done it again, and I'd sort of forgot that they asked last year, that was the first year that we'd ever received anything from them. And I just, I guess I just don't want you to think that if it's a program that can assist some of our citizens, that we don't, we don't say we won't participate in the program. We go ahead and sign up, sign up in our, and the program's available if the citizens qualify and they qualify by the federal standards, is what I'm trying to say, which I went around a long way to do so, so.
I guess, if I understand you correctly, Teresa, by us not contributing to the organization, that doesn't disqualify our residents from participating in their program?
And I also think, you know, as we, as we sort of set a budget, just because somebody asked doesn't mean I think we have to provide money to them. I think we need to, we have an obligation to sort of figure out how to prioritize the funds, and that may mean, you know, you know, some groups, they, our allocation should be based probably on how much impact we think the organization's having on our community as opposed to just because somebody asked, that'd be the thought too, so.
Is there anyone that would, has a different view on this?
Mayor, I, my only comment, as I look through the demographic information that they provide, it was very helpful though to hear that Teresa indicate that this is federal funding that they're facilitating to be able to do this. At some point, if, last year they remotely had someone call in and make their request, no one here today. I mean, to some extent, if they are a pass through for federal money, it, I don't know what the fit is for the, our community, unless there are portions of their administrative costs that aren't covered under that federal grant, of which they probably need to explore or explain better than any of the data that we've provided. In other words, this demographic information is very helpful, but it is not compelling to even advocate because I don't know necessarily what we would be contributing toward. Does that...
What our funds would be used for.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. Any other comments?
I can go with what Brian Brokaw just mentioned.
Mike, does that give you the...
Yep, I think we have good direction. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 3G, the administration decision package, Clear Government.
Cindy, can I use the mouse or not? No?
Yeah.
Is it locked or not locked? I apologize that this is, the tail end, it will be added into total, excuse me, the total numbers and amounts when we get to the end. But we, one of the things that we have talked about in the Finance, HR Committee, had to do with our software that we use that was called OpenGov. That was a link on the financial page of our city website where our citizens could go and dig into our budget, dig into some of the claims that we had paid, look at our revenues, get some more detailed information, and it provided some transparency of some numbers to our citizens. And it either wasn't friendly enough, or we advertised it a lot, Janet put it out there a lot, but no one was using it. And the data seemed to get stale quicker than we wanted it to. And the Finance Committee said, okay, no more. It was, it was like $9,900 to do it each year. So, so we're gonna stop that service right now. We didn't sign up for it again. And I had been talking amongst the other finance directors in the metro and was asking what they had used regarding transparency. And also this particular sales rep had been kind of bugging me a little bit about their program, ClearGov. So we ended up setting up a demo, and we were originally gonna talk to him for about 15 minutes, maybe half hour, I can't remember. We ended up talking to him for over an hour because we were so impressed with what we were seeing. And specifically, the two cities I want to refer you to, Bondurant and Indianola, are using it very, quite a bit right now. And I want to be able to hopefully pull up for you, I'm gonna get to the right one here, pull up for you and just show you for just, since I have a few minutes, show you a little bit about what the software will do. So this would be on the City of Bondurant's website. It takes you out and then goes to ClearGov or whatever. But if you, if you look at the, there's an overview on the, on what I would call the dashboard, but they actually have a tab called Dashboard. But they have overview, revenue expenditures, demographic projects, debt and dashboards. So on this overview, it just gives a quick snapshot of, of Bondurant, if someone wanted to look and see what's, what's that city about. Obviously, we're the ones feeding the information into this site, okay? So we get a, we get to talk about the stuff that we want to have on these pages. But, you know, here's their financial overview. The general fund, they have 4.9 million in revenue, 5.5 million in expenses. This is what it costs per capita in their community for expenses, and this is the revenue they get per capita. They have charts, graphs, they had lots of different, the availability to create different charts or graphs, you can zoom in on them, you know, click, click on them, get into more information and those types of things. Then they had a chart about debt. Why do we have debt? What is our debt amount? Look what their debt has done over the years. What has the City of Johnson's debt done over the years? Things like that. So this is their overview page. Well, if you got down to, I thought this one you would, you would maybe really like. There are four or five different specific, and after we saw all of them, we couldn't decide that we didn't want one of their different modules. But they have capital budgeting, then this transparency is all part of this, personal budgeting, operational budgeting, and then they have this digital budget book that would be quite amazing as far as being able to get you lots of charts, graphs, different things that you guys want to see, different things you want to create yourself versus the same ones I create for you every year. things you want to create yourself versus the same ones I create for you every year. But the one module that has to do with projects, you could see all projects, you can see proposed projects, you could see active projects. You wanted to look down and we know that we have this new strategic planning software and our strategic software is different than our capital projects, right? Because not all of our, or all of our capital projects that are in there for the next five years are not all in our strategic planning software. But it could be, our capital projects could be on here. So let's say we, we want to go in here and somebody wants to know about the commuter loop, East Grant Street and realignment. And so you click the project and it's going to tell you a description about the project, gives you a map of where that project is, shows you the future land map for the project, supporting materials, where the location of the project is, here's what the projected cost is going to be, here's how they're going to pay for it. Some of it's going to be bonds, some of it's going to be a grant, and then there's obviously, TIP is going to pay for some of it. Here's how the expenditures go over time. And then if you had a question, you can submit a question and get an answer. One of the other projects I looked up before tonight, or before I came over here was this underpass, Highway 65 and 330. This one has evidently already started. There evidently is more, or more materials on their Facebook page regarding it. Shows you a little bit about where it's at, but then here's the timeline. So on May 11th, they approved the contract for the amount of the project. On August 15th, they had the groundbreaking. Since August 15th, these are the updates of what's been happening in the project. So all those updates Janet sends you out every week on different emails, they would all be cataloged right here. So you could go back and say, well, yeah, but you, on this date, we heard this was going to happen with the project. They'd all be right here. And then here's where the substantial completion is supposed to be and where the landscaping is supposed to be done. Here's the funding sources for this project. Here, an individual asked a question, when will this start to be built? They asked seven months ago. City manager answered the question, thanks for the question. Here's, this was her brief answer. They asked another one, do you have any more drawings of the completed project after landscaping is done? At that point, they only had the conceptual drawing, so they didn't have that. But, you know, if people have a question on a project, they could do that. Anyway, if you think about all the projects we have, obviously it would take a while to build this out, but it would certainly be very transparent to our public what our projects would be, what we plan to do over the next five years, very accessible for them to get in and see what a project is. So Mayor, you're out talking to someone and they ask you about the Beaver Drive Trail and you say, oh, you know, we plan to start that I think in two or three months, but if you go to our website and you click on the City Projects tab, it's going to give you all that information directly and that person could do it themselves. Again, a lot of work to build out. Tom, on this one, I thought you'd like this. One of the things you've asked for, at this point, they only have two departments that have done it, but here, Finance and Employee Services, here's the overview of their department, here's who's in charge, there's their organizational chart for their department. You've asked to see organizational charts for each department. They have the Communications and Parks Department. Communications Director in Bondurant is in charge of event planning and overseeing the parks and such. So here's that, that chart. Might be a little different than other places, but I guess my point is, when we started and he started going through things, we all started getting a little excited and saying, but what about, what about, what about? And, and we all, all of us on the staff side want to give you guys, we always want to give you the information you want, all the time. And so when we come to a council meeting and we've given you staff reports and we've attached, I don't know how many maps or how many pictures or how many whatever, and you'll say, Teresa, could you get me one more thing? We think, oh, darn it, I missed the ball, I missed one, I should have got another one. My hope would be with a tool like this, I can do it that night right here while I'm standing here talking to you, or something to that effect. The, the discussion we had with the salesman is, I said to him, you know, if I wanted to do this year's budget, I, I said, I, if I could get in this year's budget, how much is it going to cost anyway? He ended up prorating, prorating for five months because I told him I wouldn't know if I could until February, till we were done with the budget, I wouldn't know. And they put in their agreement that they, they couldn't bill me, they couldn't do anything, but I could, if I signed it before December 30th, they'd lock the price in for the next five years. And I said, I can't tell you anything until I get through the budget. He understood all that. So again, you guys don't know all the numbers yet for the budget. I know you aren't going to give me an answer, just like he couldn't give any of the outside agencies an answer tonight or any of the other department directors. But I think this would be a tool that, and a more friendly tool, police chief, than our Planet tool, that he was not too happy about having to use for one of our other pieces of, pieces of information that we'd like to give you. So that's a brief version of it. In fact, Janay, who is the Finance Director for Bondurant, actually did a quick little webinar for a bunch of cities on how she uses it. He's given me a link to it. If you're bored and you'd like to watch it, I'll gladly send that to you. But this is getting added to all the rest of the decision packages that you will be discussing here in a couple of weeks. So, any questions about it?
Teresa, I have a couple of questions. This looks like, you know, great software and it would provide a lot of great information, but obviously it's only as good as the information that goes into it. Do we have any sense in talking to Indianola or Bondurant, just how much time they have to spend to input this information? And do we, do, do we have the staff resources available to do that? I mean, are we going to have to hire one person just to do this all the time?
Oh, Lord, I hope not. My answer to you is no, we're not going to hire someone else.
That's a good answer.
Yeah, we're not going to hire anybody else to do that. I have very, I have a very smart, capable new assistant who is trying to get everything as streamlined and up to date and as accessible and current and helpful as possible. And so she was involved in these, in this discussion with us as well. I would assume I'm going to obviously have to have others involved. I can't remember if he talked about being able to upload through Incode. There was a connection that we could.
That was one nice thing is it can pull data from Incode.
You know, the budget, if I have the budget in Incode, it'll put it in there. And vice versa, if we end up deciding to build the budget in the budget tool in here, which is what they do in Indianola, then it dumps from here into the accounting software. So they aren't doing it twice. So I didn't feel overwhelmed that way. I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, but you know, we have all these pictures of the table of organizations and infographics and all of that. I mean, somebody has to produce that. That isn't just a matter of dumping in.
Right, right. And the, the, the part that is, is and is, is and always is frustrating, I believe for me and several of the department directors, is that we already have all of that, it's just in a lot of different places. So someone wrapping their arms around it, pulling it all together for the one big first time and then monitoring it, sure, it'll be a, it'll be a job. It'd be a fun job, getting this up to date and cool and, and spiffy and GFO award making type document. Yeah, it'd be great. But no, I am not going to ask for more help to do that.
The other question is the, when you've had conversations with the other communities, do they have any data that shows that their residents are looking at this information?
Oh, I don't know, I didn't ask them that.
You didn't ask them that? That would be interesting to know because one of the concerns that we had about the prior program was that nobody was looking at it. So it'd be interesting.
I assume since, at least somebody was asking some questions, that somebody in one of the towns is looking at it, but.
At least one person.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I'll ask them.
Okay, that, that would be good to know.
Other questions, Council?
Can you forward that webinar that you said?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I would get to know more information. I have some strange questions as the mayor had. The current usage of our current tool, that you say is going wide and why, how, what's the percentage of usage on the external websites, I mean, the citizens? And why is it not that way? Why is only less people using it? And will that same thing happen to this use, this software? Unless we actually, you know, let people know to use this, right? Until then, it will not be used at all. So some more data, that kind will help me.
Okay.
Thanks.
And this is like a subscription service? Do you pay annually?
As best you are aware, this would not, short of the OpenGov, this would not be replacing any of our software?
No.
Okay.
Unless we decide that we don't need Planet anymore, once we get the CIP all in here and I'm able to get some of those financial reports. Because Matt Stufel really does the crunching of that, those numbers for me, not the Planet software.
Okay.
So I'd have to ask Janay too if, because they're putting their projects on there and I didn't run a lot of project reports, if they're able to do that. They should be able to, I would think.
My, I, I would appreciate that. My initial take, I spent a lot of time on the Bondurant side today. It's a very expensive static website. I, I'm not impressed.
Not impressed.
So looking at it from a replacement of other software, I get somewhat intrigued about being able to port data so that we're not duplicating it. I have similar concerns from the mayor from the standpoint of someone's going to have to generate all of this. I believe in transparency, but at that price, I mean, we can hire a part-time web developer to make it look spiffy and pretty. And so I'm kind of concerned about those dollars and what they're charging for really what we're, at least what I saw on the front end of that Bondurant side, it, 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 it didn't strike me as much.
And they don't have all of the modules. They don't have the personnel budget one, I don't think. I'll double check that too.
The, the other thing is if, if other department heads feel like this may be a breath of fresh air to be able to provide all of this in one centralized location, then perhaps they start looking at how they could prorate a portion of this expense out of what they're already doing. I just am concerned, it's, I, I, I mean, if it was a third that amount, I might consider it. I'm really concerned about that price.
Okay, I'll double check that too. The prices are basically built on the size of your budget, in all honesty. And since our budget is so big and we'd have so many capital projects, I guess. So, okay, very good. Well, like we said, we'll talk about it again.
Thank you.
And then, I guess, I don't know, we're already past seven. I wanted to just double check to see if you thought at the council meeting on January 17th, if you think we need to start any earlier. I wasn't sure what your schedule will be like now that the legislature will be starting, that's a Tuesday. That night is what we'll start, I mean, the only work session item will be budget. So I didn't know if we needed to start earlier than six or not. Let me think about it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think you should start it based on how long you think we need and if that's 5:30 or whenever it is, I'll try to make that work. I, I think it should be based on what you think it's going to be needed for us to digest the materials, not based on when I can show up.
And I agree completely. What have we done in the past, Teresa?
And maybe we'll, we have a finance meeting next Monday. We'll talk about it then.
Okay, well, we have completed the agenda for the work session, so we will adjourn the work session. Can we just roll right?